First item on the agenda is citizen comment. I welcome the audience tonight, and in fact, just so everybody can kind of get up to speed, I'm going to invite senior planner Lori Anderson to give a little background on what we're doing here, so that everybody's on the same page or close to it.
Welcome. So, can you all hear me? Okay, so raise your hand if you think I can hear you. So, I wanted to give so many of you an understanding of kind of where we are in this project, because I think there's been 2017 techniques, they call it land use, so land use techniques. And, we're planning, part of the topic of mobile home parks, mobile home communities. So, what they're doing is talking about options to preserve the housing. And, they have heard from, as the owners of the property, they've heard from the parks. And, what they are going to be doing is talking about different strategies, different ways to approach, um, some meetings with owners and with those of you who are homeowners in the parks, to talk about this in more depth. That's not on the agenda tonight, but would be, how's that?
Yeah, in the middle between all of us.
Okay.
I know, I'm hard here, so.
Yeah, that's fine.
Thank you.
Um, anyway, the tentative time for the planning commission to present their recommendation to the city, so probably March-ish, something like that. And, as they continue to have this conversation, they'll be developing a recommendation to the city council. In the meantime, the city council has put a moratorium on redevelopment of the mobile home communities, just to preserve space, to have this conversation and figure out which direction the city should go. So, that's a brief summary of what the project is for. Oh, thank you. That's a red flag here. And, tonight, the planning commission is going to be talking about a couple of different alternatives. That's what their conversation will be about. And, they may make some suggestions about policy directions that they're preliminarily considering for these two options. So, with that, I just wanted you all to know what this project is. We have not sent out the invitations yet for these upcoming formal public meetings. They won't be formal in the sense of being really formal, but they will be public meetings that all of the homeowners would be invited to, as well as all the owners of the properties. So, with that, I'll turn it back to Doug.
Yes. Thank you. So, as I said, the first item on the agenda is citizen comment. Any citizen wishing to render comment is welcome to do so at the podium to your right and our left. Please state your name, your address, and leave me your comments to three minutes. We used to have a timer up there. Is there going to be one?
So, the time will be up on the projector while you're going. It will give you a 30-second warning.
Great. Do we have a sign-in sheet?
We do.
All right. So, if I get your name wrong, please feel free to correct me. The first name on the list is Joanna Crocker.
Hello, and thank you for having us all and making the nice sign-in process. And, I also want to recognize, I think I saw a couple of the Millard brothers come in who are the owners of the park in which I live, which is Inglewood Shores East. My background is, I'm retired from the office of Chris Bailey, former King County prosecutor, as a result of an accident in 2012 in which someone driving at 65 miles an hour and texting drove into me. So, all I could afford for the rest of my life is a trailer park, and I actually love it. The people in there are great. I love my community. I don't want to go anywhere else. I want to stay. I, I just really asked the council to reconsider the zoning situation, so that, I pretty much guess it, all my friends and neighbors here, we want to stay where we are, and we want it to also work for our owners, so we can be compatible. There's a second part to this. Before I came to Washington State, I was the manager of compatible enterprises for the nature conservancy Asia Pacific. And, I still work on the water and the land as an assistant coach for the coach to the U.S. National Sprint Canoe and Kayak Team. I'm out on this river every day. Conservation is a big deal. I just helped Forterra with that project in Bothell, where they Bothell Wayne Golf Course. And, keeping these mobile home parks where our homes are above the ground is a pretty big help for conservation, because it's less damaging than taking them away and putting something new. And, I'd really like you to consider that part as well. And, I have spoken to Forterra, and there are Forterra people willing to speak with you folks as appropriate. That's about it. And, I really appreciate the opportunity to be able to come here and speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Joanna. The next name on the sign-in sheet is Lynn Vaughn.
I live in Lakewood Villa, and I've been there about 14 years now. And, a lot of other people have been there a lot longer than I have, 20 years, 30 years, 40 years, when it was even first built. But, I don't know how I got roped into this, but, anyway, just wanted to say that we love it there, and we were hoping to retire and enjoy our life there. It's a beautiful park, and we don't have any problems there. We have a couple of problems, but they're dealing with it. We have a nice clubhouse. We get together on Wednesday nights and play dominoes with a bunch of people. We get together and chat and stuff, and it's kind of neat. And, just like the rest of us, I stuck about $10,000 into my house here about three years ago, and brought it all up to date, and I love it. So, that's what I got to say. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Lynn. So, everybody who stood up, you're also residents, is it Lakewood Villa?
Yeah.
Okay, and you're standing up because Lynn is speaking on your behalf?
Yes.
Okay, sounds good. Thanks, Lynn.
Thank you.
All right. The next name on the sign-in sheet is, I've got, I think it's H. Sorensen.
But, that is also Lakewood Villa?
Yeah. Do you want to add anything to what Lynn said? And, if you do, come on up to the podium and give us your address, and you're welcome to three minutes.
Okay.
I do see you all there. You can stand, you can sit, but I get that you're all here as a group. Go ahead, H.
Yes.
And, did I get the name right?
Sorensen.
Yeah, go ahead.
I lived for about 11 years, since 2006. I moved there from Ballard, where I lived for 22 years. I moved out of Ballard because the landlady died. Her son, the lawyer, took over the property, and everything changed. And, it was no longer affordable, and he wanted to do other things with the property where I rented. So, I said, "Well, I'm a working person. I will go and find a reasonable place to live, but not an apartment," because this was a duplex. So, I felt like I was living in a house for 22 years. I wanted my own place, my own home, and I said, "Well, it's going to be a mobile home park," where I have my walls and my little space around me, but that is my home. It is not an apartment dwelling. That makes a big difference to me. I don't have to share the entrance with everybody else. It feels like my home. And, I can understand that the people are considering this as a piece of property that can be developed. But, you all probably live in your own single-dwelling homes, and nobody's coming and saying, "Let's take this water land and redevelop it." And, that's how it feels. We may be renting the space, but we feel like we live in individual dwellings that we can improve upon. I can paint my walls and not ask for permission, because it's my home, my little square. And, that makes a big difference. It's not really a free space of land to be developed. And, as far as alternatives, it was a 55 and older park. I wasn't that old when I moved in, and I was working, and then things happened. You're at a certain age where things happen, and your income becomes less, and all of a sudden, your options are less. At this point, if this place goes, I'll be homeless. And, we do not have places where people like me can afford to live in Seattle anymore. So, I want you to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sorensen. Okay, listen, I respect everybody having a right to speak here. I'm going to give everybody that chance who wants to speak here. It's not a football game. We're not going to cheer, we're not going to boo, and I'll tell you why. It kind of chills somebody's desire to say something that may not be popular. And, we're here to balance good ideas and bad ideas and that kind of thing. I know you're speaking from the heart. It's apparent from the people who are coming up here. So, I just ask that you respect everybody here who may or may not agree. There may be somebody up there who says something you don't like, maybe somebody up there who obviously did say something you like. That's all great, but we're going to keep it to ourselves, so everybody feels like their ideas are welcome here. Appreciate that. So, next name on the list is Bob Humble.
I guess I signed, no problem.
That's all right.
No, I'm not going to give.
Okay, thanks, sir. No problem, Bob. The next name on the list, and I can't quite read it. I see the first name's Fred. I think it's Helms. Does that sound right?
Contamination.
Okay. Next name, are you Fred?
Yeah.
Fred, do you want to speak?
Sure.
Come on up.
Hi, everybody. My name is Fred Helmers, recently retired from the Seattle Police Department as a civilian employee. My mom and dad moved into Lakewood Villa in '83 and put the trailer on the lot, and they loved it. My mom passed, my dad passed away about 10 years ago, my mom a couple of years ago. I, for some reason, never sold the place. I paid the rent out of my pocket on a vacant place. Circumstances happen where I cannot live where I was living in Kirkland. I just sold my house. I'm now living down in Lakewood Villa for the last three weeks, and I love it. And, I don't plan on going anywhere else. I just invested some money into it and have planned on doing more. And, I've known, my mom knew a few of the people that lived in there, DeeDee, Holly, three years and years of some of the other ones that might have been around. And, I don't know what to say, but, you know, it's only been a few weeks that I've been in there, but, you know, hopefully, this is it. You know, the next place would be an assisted living place, and I'm not ready for that. So, that's about all I got to say.
All right. Thanks, Fred. All right. The next name I'm seeing is Ruben DeValle, DeValley?
Thank you for the opportunity to allow us to express our opinion and what our situation is with regards to living in a mobile homes. I'm retired, just retired, and I had a long history of professionals and business. To make it short, we have been downsizing a lot, and until the time that we moved to Lakewood Villa about, almost five years ago. And, we loved it there. It's quite different living in a mobile home, because it's quite affordable, and that the way we interact with the community compared to like a big housing project, apartments and all of that, is quite different. And, that the main, the main thing is that we have a good peace of mind that we will not be spending a lot of money, the way we used to before, for our housing, for our living and everything, and it's very affordable. And, the location is very good. We have heard a lot, well, not really a lot, but, you know, several years ago about what the outlook will be for the development of the area. So, I'm not surprised that we're now coming into this point that the discussion is beginning to happen. And, so, I'm glad to hear that and to learn that the whole intent of talking, beginning to talk, is to be able to understand the feelings and the situation of the people who are living in mobile homes. And, basically, like almost everybody else, there's a feeling of security in terms of, we're not going to be worrying a lot about if we move to a different place, if we move to a much more expensive place, because as far as I'm concerned, although we have the means, but I like to live in a very simple way. So, thank you very much for giving us the opportunity to speak out and express ourselves that hopefully the plan to be able to, number one, provide, continuing to provide affordable housing for the residents, will be part of the major plan in your planning process. Thank you.
Thank you, Ruben. Okay, the next name I see on the list is Axel Jasper. Okay, no problem. Next name is Bill, I think it's Farza. Bill here?
Up here.
Okay. Next name is John Ficcarelli. Is that right? Come on up.
My name is Johnny Ficcarelli, and I moved over here to Lakewood Villa a couple of years ago, and a very nice community. Got a lot of great friends and people in this community that we share a lot together as friends. And, I feel that I'm retired now after all these years of working as a general contractor, and went through a lot, and then now, my living as Social Security, if you know what I mean, you guys, you know, if you're retired yet, but you'll feel the pinch when it bites you. And then, living in where I'm living at with my fiancee Cindy, you know, we share a nice mobile home now, because before, a lot of these mobile homes were, you know, they need work. I put a lot of work and money into this mobile home to make it one of the nicest mobile homes in the park. And, to have it all go down, I feel like I'm getting robbed, along with the rest of the people, and that's how I feel, because this is the rest of my life as retirement, and this is all we have. And then, where am I going to go at an old age, you know? Next stop is probably a nursing home. So, anyway, reality sets in, and it's, you get old and you realize, here you are, and what you're going to do. So, all I have to say is, good luck on all our part for all of us, everybody in this community, because they're a bunch of great people. And, I feel we don't deserve this, to have to pick up and move. It's really devastating at my age. So, anyway, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Next name on the list is Victoria Lean. Okay. And, after that is Randy, Randy, I'm struggling to read the last name, but if you're out there, you want to pass? Okay. And then, right after that is another Randy, starts with a W. Come on.
My name is Randy Weaver, and I am a resident of Lakewood Villa Mobile Park. I am a retired former law enforcement officer out of Alaska, as well as a state-certified firefighter. So, I've had some experience on fighting fires in some of these mobile homes, as well as commercial, high-rise, et cetera. Upon retiring and moving to Seattle, I went into business, and I've also been a real estate developer. I was CEO and president of Northwest Land Management for many years, and my type of building that I did was I would go to the Girdon Factory in Oregon, and I would buy double-wide modulators, eight or 10 at a time. I installed a lot of them around the Duval and Monroe area, and I can tell you now that I can't do that anymore. Property has become so expensive that there is no place to put these type of homes anymore. And, I currently live in Lakewood Villa. I own the newest one there. I put it in just a few years ago. It was a brand-new one, and I find now that we're involved in this issue. And, there is a real sense of community in all the Lakewood folks, and they meet and play dominoes, as was stated earlier. And, on my street, they informally call me the Lakewood, mayor of Lakewood Villa, because I'm always mowing somebody's yard or fixing the roof and kind of paying it forward. I hope when I'm 84, that sense of community is still there, and other folks that are younger, like JJ, that just spoke, will come and mow my yard or do things for me as a good neighbor. I talked to a couple of the folks there, and they said, "Well, maybe if they put us out, I'll go into Section 8 housing." I said, "Well, good luck. You'll get on the list, but there is none." So, that means they're pretty much out in the street. I am fortunate enough to be still young enough and have enough finances that I could go somewhere else, but I really hate to see this type of affordable housing taken out of the community, because I don't know where they're going to go or what they're going to replace it with, and I'm sure they all have the same thoughts. So, I would encourage the city to really look at this as, in the zoning process that they're trying to do here, that they would look at it and consider, you're putting a lot of folks out of their homes that can't go anywhere else. I've got a neighbor on either side of me. They're not here tonight, because they don't have the ability. By the way, I do mow their yards, and I do paint their fences and help them out. They are on Social Security, and that is it for these folks, and you'll literally be putting them out in the street if they take this property away. So, please consider that in your, in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Randy. Okay, next name is our colleague, former colleague, Commissioner Dennis Mendry. Come on up, Dennis, if you want to speak.
Hi, folks.
Hey, Dennis.
So, I reside at 6410 Northeast 182nd Street here in Kenmore. I'd first like to thank the staff, city council, and the planning commission for taking on this needful, challenging task. And, to kind of start my process, which I've got two minutes and 30 seconds or something, you know, one of the things that I thought of shortly as I was reviewing this information was that, you know, Kenmore has been considered a family-friendly community, and all these folks are talking about family. They're all family down there. They're all family in the other manufactured homes, in our own personal neighborhoods. It's a family environment, which is great. And, the other, the slogan that started our community, courtesy is contagious. And, I think as you develop a scenario on how to handle this, and you keep those two elements in mind, and kind of work within the context of what you can, there's zoning, there's planning, there are those elements that you can put to the developer and say, "This is how it has to be. This is what we need to have if you want to do this." Now, this, it was interesting, as I was reading through, having spent four years on the TOD, doing the Downtown Transit Orientated District with higher-density overlay, I realized as I was reading this, that the ideal scenario would be to do an overlay, but put requirements that could benefit all parties, the existing people there, as well as the developer who will get a higher density. But, you put restrictions on what he has to develop. A good example is when we did the TOD originally, we actually had the boundaries going across 522, all along the Sammamish River, so that as those areas got developed, they were required to do a pathway, a public access, along Swamp Creek, down along the Sammamish River, all the way to Lake Washington. But, they got a lot. They got huge density. And, as I was looking at this before I got deeper into it, on the first chart, I did my own calculations of TOD overlay over all these places, and golly gee, I came up with the same number on the next page, which I guess Lori already did, on the next page. But, point being is that the potential with doing an overlay is you can really control what the development looks like, and you can incent, give incentives to make the higher density so that, and a higher level of affordable housing, so those that are on fixed income can still live there, those that want a family environment or ownership, they have a little piece that they could buy. Little things like that might make it work for everybody. So, you won't see the last of me, I guarantee you. Now that I've finished decorating the concrete plant, I'll be back.
You're always welcome, Dennis. Thank you for that. Next name is, is it Daniel Stoner? Did I get it right?
My name is Daniel Stoner. I am the owner of the Lakewood Mobile Home Park, which is different from the Lakewood Villa Mobile Home Park, at 6905 Northeast 182nd Street, which is directly adjacent to City Hall. We, I'll keep my comments brief, because we spoke with Lori Anderson earlier today, and we're planning on meeting individually as owners who are also here to discuss in more detail sort of our thoughts as well. But, I wanted to just go over briefly, really three thoughts or three areas that I think this really boils down to, the three issues that are raised by this moratorium. Really, the first issue is the idea of preserving, as these homeowners have so eloquently spoke, about preserving affordable housing. And, it's something that us owners are definitely in favor of, but we, as we talked about the last time we were here, we were coming to the council to collaborate, to really work together to create a win-win situation for all the parties involved to hopefully make everybody happy if possible. And, one of the ways that we think we can do that is through preservation incentives, just as we have development incentives in the code. The idea of preservation incentives is something we'd like to pursue with the city staff, and we'd like to talk to them over the next couple of weeks to explore that. The second area that this topic raises is the idea of, okay, someday when a park closes, what do you do? And, really, in our mind, the question of how to humanely and respectfully transition people to other housing, to create assistance to have them transition to other affordable housing, is something that we believe other communities and other jurisdictions have pursued, and we think there are good models out there that we'd like to discuss with staff as well. The third issue is, okay, well, how do we preserve, how do we create more affordable housing moving forward? And, currently, the code has development incentives to encourage the development of affordable housing, which we think is a good thing, right? As a developer, if I can get additional floor area ratio, and I could build more units, but some of them are income-restricted, it's all a math equation, but if it works, we will take advantage of those development incentives. And, one of the residents mentioned the idea of perhaps making additional incentives or to try and encourage more lower-income individuals than even the code currently provides for. It's definitely something that we would be happy to take a look at and look forward to that conversation in the future. So, I know a number of my owner colleagues are planning on talking, but those are really the three issues that we are looking forward to engaging the city in a dialogue.
Okay. Thank you, Daniel. Next name is Russ Millard.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, thank you for allotting the time for us to speak. We come from a different perspective. I'm the senior property manager at Inglewood East, and I lived in a manufactured home for 14 years and raised five kids there. So, I have a perspective of how important manufactured housing is. We prefer to think of more incentives rather than punishments or restrictions. We would suggest that we go with some type of a property tax reduction for manufactured housing parks, also a reduction for the surface water cost, as well as you can also housing parks, also a reduction for the surface water cost, as well as you can also regulate the water and sewer costs, reduce those for the residents. Now, understanding these taxes, as well as the fire department tax that was just initiated, you could exempt us from that tax. Now, all those costs that we receive, we pass on to the tenants at or below cost. If you help us to continue to do what we do, you're helping each one of them. Now, we are park preservation, so we've never closed a park, quite frankly, don't intend to close a park. Please don't use that against us, because we want incentives. But it's like the phone company. You always try to help the guy that's leaving, but you forget about the guy that's been a loyal customer. We've owned manufactured housing communities for the last 35 years, and intend to do so for the next 100 years. But we really believe that if you can incentivize the developers, the property owners, and landowners, to continue to provide affordable housing, more will come. We've tried to develop properties into parks. We did the last park that was built in King County a few -- well, a decade or so ago. But it's just too expensive. We haven't been able to do that. And every time we get a park close to being approved, it's more advantageous to build it into a site-built housing community. So, we sell it to a developer. It hasn't been built yet, but we end up selling it. So, if you could lessen the restrictions for enhancing, improving, and producing more units, us, for one, we'd love to develop more units. And if you can make it more affordable for them, and for us to retain, and become manufactured housing parks, and retain, and maintain that status, that would be better for the whole room. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Russ. Next name is Nancy Ward.
My neighbors at Lakewood Villa have already presented in enough detail.
Okay. Thank you, Nancy. Next name is Holly. And Holly, I'm having trouble with the last name, so if you want to step up. Okay. Thanks so much. Next name is Tom Graham. No problem. Thanks, anyway. Next name is Walt Olson.
Hello. My name is Walt Olson. My address is 205 South Meridian in Puyallup, Washington, 98371. I am an attorney representing Lakewood Villa Mobile Home Park, and have represented the owners of that community since the 1990s. There have been two generations of family members that have offered this community to Kenmore as affordable housing, and as housing for older persons. And I want to just say to the audience, Lakewood Villa has no plans of closing, or selling, or making you move. And I think the owners would be concerned if someone is telling you otherwise in that respect. Lakewood Villa has always been owned by the Dexter family, and entities that they control. And they favor each of the incentives that other owners have raised in this meeting, and others, but also favor the orderly process by which eventually, mobile home parks transition into another use. And other cities and municipalities have developed an orderly process in order to do that. For instance, the city of Seattle has an ordinance which requires the approval of a relocation report and plan, and a permit before an owner in the city limits of Seattle, anyway, can serve that 12-month notice that state law requires before a community can be closed. I would encourage you to review Seattle's ordinance in that regard. I brought a copy of that ordinance with me, and a short letter confirming the Dexter's position with regard to what you're considering. And I'll leave that with the folks that matter in that regard. The city of Des Moines also has an ordinance that I would urge you to consider. In the last year, I have been involved in five different park closures in King County. Lakewood Villa was not, and will not be, one of them for the next foreseeable future. But in each of those communities, there was a requirement of a relocation report and plan that I think was helpful, because it provided a resource to the residents to talk to someone, and to get the information they need in order to find another place to live. And so, in that respect, I would encourage the planning commission to continue to consider the balance, the difficult balance that you face, the balance between the homeowner's rights, but also the community owner's rights, as well as the city's need for planning in regards to growth, and the requirements of the Growth Management Act, that make us look at these things from time to time. And in that regard, I would ask you to continue to balance each of the stakeholders' interests in that respect, and come up with a decision that hopefully makes sense for everyone. Thank you.
Thanks, Walt. Next name, and this is the last name on the list, is Ishbel Dickens. Oh, I got more?
Good evening, members of the planning commission. My name is Ishbel Dickens. I'm from Seattle, Washington. I hadn't planned to say anything tonight, but having listened to Russ Millard and Walt Olson, I just would like to maybe clarify a couple of things. Mr. Millard talked about incentives, property tax reductions, reductions on water and sewer costs, et cetera, et cetera. All great ideas. The city of Lynwood attempted that several years ago, as a way to offer the landlord a sort of voluntary option, if you, you know, if you're prepared to keep your community open for five years, then we'll look at some of these incentives. At that time, the community owners were not at all interested in any of those incentives. And so, ultimately, the city of Lynwood simply went ahead with their zoning ordinance, because there wasn't a voluntary option available to them. As far as Mr. Olson's comments about the communities in South King County that he's been involved with this year, there is still a lawsuit pending, based on the city of Sea Tax relocation ordinance provision. That's still pending in court, and some of the other communities that closed, that Mr. Olson was involved with, where there was a court process, they ended up settling, but it was an expensive, traumatic experience for the homeowners. So, while -- and those communities closed, the homeowners are no longer in those five -- well, four of the five, because there's a lawsuit pending in the other one. But lawsuits are not the way to go, and therefore, potentially, simply having a relocation plan isn't the way to go, especially when those plans aren't very dignified, they aren't very inclusive, they aren't very detailed, they just give a list of all the communities you could move to, regardless of how much it costs to move there, they give a list of affordable housing complexes, regardless of the availability of housing in those complexes. They're not very helpful, in terms of what these families are going to do if their community closes. So, I caution you against thinking that that's the, you know, the answer to your problems, is just to come up with a relocation plan. Thanks so much for your time.
Thanks, Ishbel. And I do have another name here. It was handed to me. John Crumwide? Come on up, John.
Thank you for your time and consideration. I live in Lakewood Mobile Home Park. I've been there about six years now. And when I moved in, I was told by the managers there, that the Shins had no intention of selling the park. And so, I bought two units in the park. I remodeled one, and sold it to a gal who, she was living in motels, but she was able to buy a home in the park, a place she could fix up and call home, and it was affordable to her. And then I fixed up a double-wide for myself, and put all the money I had into it. The park, our rents, our park pays almost three-quarters of a million dollars a year in rent. When we moved in, it was about a half a million. Some of it is these fees that are being passed on to us, the surface water removal, Kenmore franchise fee. Well, there's a few of them, but someone else mentioned them. It would be nice if they wouldn't be as high as they are, and the water and sewer come to $100 a month, which is really a difficulty for some of these folks. Like the other people have said, you know, our neighbors become our friends, and we take care of each other, we look out for each other. A lot of us have health issues. A couple of my neighbors wanted to be here, but they can't be here. Arlene has cancer. She's fighting cancer, and she's just barely able to make a rent with her family's help each month. But I don't know where these folks would go if this park was closed. If these parks are sold, there's -- we had a few people, unfortunately, couldn't afford the rent increases, and they moved out. And three houses in a row moved out. Of those three houses, I know two of the women have died. And one, the elderly woman died within a month of being evicted, and the other one died within, I'd say, a year. It's really difficult for people that are low-income to be kicked out of their homes. And we've sunk everything we had into these places, thinking that it wouldn't be sold. And so, we remodeled, and we put in gardens, and we sunk all our money into them, and it would be a disaster if these parks were sold, and these people had to move. As you know, there's nothing affordable in the area. So, that's all I have to say.
Thanks, John.
Yeah.
So. Excuse me. I'm going to say, before you get up, I'm going to give you a chance, by the way, if you haven't spoken already, and I'm going to open that up to everybody here. If there's somebody who didn't sign in, you're still welcome to step up and do your three minutes, just like everybody else. Ma'am, do you want to step up?
May I come up just a little?
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. I did not sign in. Thank you, planning commission. I am Carol Jones Tisfer, the observer for the K-Big local group here, Kenmore-Bothel Interfaith Group. We, among our churches, have low-income and non-English-speaking parishioners who would be severely impacted if they were asked to relocate. They do not have the resources, nor the verbal ability, to help themselves. The Interfaith Group is here simply as an observer to your conversation, not as an adversary, to try to understand how you can help our parishioners, and how we, as a faith group, can help these people. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I am here to observe all sides of the conversation for the group. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Anybody else want to step up? Come on up, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Carol Coonley Myers, and I do live at the Lakewood Villa, but my questions are a little different. You know, I know you've all heard about, you know, nowhere else to go, and whatnot. But in your zoning, your planning, I would ask that you seriously take in consideration -- my family has lived in Kenmore since 1938. We moved from Seattle out here because it's safe. It's a safe place to live, you know? And the two things that I worry the most about right now is the safety of building multi -- over Redmond Bedroom Community. Everywhere you look, tons and tons and tons and tons and tons of housing, and they're low-income housing. My sister-in-law had to move out of Redmond, because she couldn't afford it. You know, safety, the safety when you call the police, it takes them longer to get there, because there's so many people, so much traffic, and stuff. So, I'm asking is, take that into consideration with your planning, please, and also environmental, and stuff. We have all these wonderful wetlands and stuff in the neighborhood, in the area, and stuff, and I really would hate -- I grew up, I remember riding horses down the road down here, and stuff. Please keep that in consideration, too, and make it a priority, because, yes, we're all older, and we're growing older, and, yes, we need to think about that, but we got to think about our children, too, in the area, and where they're going, and where they're growing up. And the planning commission, you're the first step. You're the first step in planning their futures, when you look at it. And now, that's all I have to say, and I thank you.
Thanks, Carol. Anybody else? No hands? Thanks, everyone, for your comments tonight. They are being heard. There's a long way to go on this. There are a lot of different sides to this. It's good to see a face on your side of this. We're human beings. We're here to make the best decisions for people who are here, and people who aren't here. There are people who can't afford housing, and they couldn't make it tonight. Some are in Lakewood Villa, some are out there looking for apartments, and they don't know this stuff is going on, and they're having trouble making ends meet. Anyway, there's a lot of sides to this, and we want to look at all sides. So, thanks for giving your side of it to us tonight. All right. That closes the citizen comment portion of tonight's agenda. The next item on the agenda is approval of the December 5, 2017 Planning Commission Meeting Minutes. Do I hear a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve the December 5? Yes.
All right. Do I hear a second? All right. Discussion? No discussion? All in favor of approving the minutes, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, raise your hand and say nay. No nays? Any abstentions? No abstentions. Therefore, the minutes are approved, and the motion carries. The next item on the agenda is the election of planning commission officers at the first planning commission meeting of every year. The planning commission charter calls for the election of officers. There's two elected offices on the commission. One is the chair, one is the vice chair. So, let's start with the election of the chair for 2018. Do I hear nominations for chair of the planning commission?
I'd like to nominate Doug Nugent as chair of the planning commission for 2018.
Right. Is there a second for Doug Nugent as chair?
Second.
Thank you for that. So, one name has entered in for the nomination, Doug Nugent. Do I hear nominations for another person to be chair? Going once? Twice? All right. The nominations are closed. Submit to the commission, the name of Doug Nugent, for election as chair of the planning commission for 2018. All in favor, say, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, raise your hand and say nay. Any abstentions? There being none, Doug Nugent is elected chair for the planning commission for 2018. Thank you. The next office is that of vice chair. Do I hear nominations for the vice chair for 2018 in the planning commission? I'd like to nominate Mark Ornschall. Do I hear a second for the nomination of Mark Ornschall?
Second.
Mr. Mulcair. We have a second for Mark Ornschall, so his name is entered. Do I hear a nomination for anyone else as vice chair of the planning commission? Going once? Twice? No nominations. The nominations are closed, so I submit to the commission the name of Mark Ornschall as vice chair of the planning commission for 2018. All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, please raise your hand and say nay. Any abstentions? There being none, Mark Ornschall is elected vice chair of the planning commission for 2018. Thank you. That closes that item of the agenda. The next item on the agenda is Housing Strategy Plan, preserving existing affordable housing.
Good evening, planning commissioners. As we start into tonight's agenda, excuse me, which is to discuss a couple of different land-use scenarios, and make some very preliminary recommendations or comments about that, I wanted to first bring up a public involvement proposal that was in your staff packet. This would be a time for both the park owners and the homeowners to meet in more of an informal way with the planning commission to express concerns and ideas. This would be time for both the park owners and the homeowners to meet in more of an informal way with the Planning Commission to express concerns and ideas and, and discuss more fully the potential proposals with the commission. So in the materials, we had proposed that on January 23, as you recall, your meeting on the 16th was canceled. The City Council took that date for a City Council meeting. So we are proposing that for the following two Tuesdays, January 23rd and January 30th, that you hold meetings on the 23rd with the owners, the property owners, and then on the 30th with the homeowners, community homeowners. We would ask and suggest that at those meetings, the other group certainly come and listen and learn, but that the conversation be kept to either the property owners or to the homeowners, depending on the evening. So if those times and that format is acceptable to the commission, we would go ahead and extend the invitations. We would plan to contact the owners, but also have a mailing list now of all of the homeowners in the park, the six mobile home parks. So that's the staff recommendation.
Thank you. Any questions? Vice Chair?
What sort of format did you have in mind, Lori, for these meetings?
Right. So with the owners, because there's a limited number, there are five owners, we assume it would be more of a roundtable format where they could discuss their interests, issues, and perspectives. With the larger group, the community members, we thought it would be helpful to have kind of an overview presentation, since many of them would not be familiar with the project to date. And then we could divide into small groups with individual commissioners. I guess we haven't really talked very much about how that would happen. I think having it in the format of essentially a public hearing may not be helpful, but maybe smaller group discussions that then could be brought back to the Planning Commission as a whole.
Yes, Mark?
I like that idea. I just wonder if there's, you know, what kind of structure you have in mind. I mean, is it just, like, see, I know it's very informal and roundtable. I like that idea, but is, will there be questions? Will there be some kind of structure to go with that?
Right. We certainly can set out questions. We could set out four or five questions that the group, for example, if it was a table group, could discuss. Again, I think we would certainly need to start the meeting with a more formal education opportunity.
Oh, Commissioner Vanderland?
I would support the idea of having a group meeting versus breakouts. I think whenever you do breakouts, you have a tendency to lose thoughts, or you don't have the opportunity to hear thoughts from the other group. So I would, I would argue for keeping the group together.
Oh.
Also, I think the idea of being able to submit a half a dozen or so set questions for the owners and the occupants to submit answers to beforehand and have them be able to have a chance to think about it would be useful. I'm not sure we would have time to do that. This is our only meeting between now and then. If we can't do that, would it be possible for the commission members to submit questions to staff outside of the meeting to be included? Or is there some, is there a regulatory restriction from doing that?
You certainly could submit questions, although I would hesitate. I mean, you'd put staff in the position of reading out. I don't think, if everybody sent in five questions, I don't think we could present somebody with a list of 35 questions and expect any kind of a response. So I think another approach would be to have staff prepare some questions, and then I think we could send those out. And you can send your feedback to me. Certainly, you wouldn't want to discuss it in the context of a de facto meeting, but you could send comments back to me, and maybe we could sort out appropriate questions, five or six.
There any, anybody else who wants to comment on that format proposal?
I mean, I think it's a good idea. If there's a little bit of give and take before the meeting, the meeting's likely to be more efficient.
Right.
They better understand where we're coming from. We obviously are going to get briefed on what they want, and we've heard things tonight about their concerns, too.
Right.
So, Mike, does that, did that strike you as suitable?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
So the one, it sounded like Commissioner Vanderland was not wanting to do any kind of a breakout, but have sort of a large group meeting. How would you envision people providing their input?
Well, I think for the owners' meeting, you've got a fairly small group.
Yeah, right.
So we could do that as a group together. It would be interesting to see if we had a large turnout like tonight for the owners, then obviously that's not going to be useful. That was one of the reasons I was hoping to ask, have some pre-questions that folk could answer and then present. That might be one way to organize that. But if you're going to have a large number of folks who want to attend, and certainly should, maybe we could ask them to appoint a representative who would speak for them, so that we could, we could go about this in a little more efficient manner. Or do a hybrid of that, perhaps with a public testimony sort of, sort of format. But we've got two different groups. They're going to be different sizes.
Right.
So you're going to need two different approaches to make that work.
Right.
I just, I'm fearful of breakout sections, because you do lose information across. Not every commissioner is going to hear the same thing if they're focusing on a single group, unless you did some kind of rotation. But even then, I think you tend to lose the sense of the conversation if you're, if you're moving around, or you have people who don't have the opportunity to hear the full conversation from each group.
One way to resolve that would be if you did have a very large group, and to be efficient in breaking to smaller groups and ask, you know, similar questions to each group, would be then to have a sort of a time allowed for reporting back from the individual groups to the whole, so that everybody can kind of see if there are any sort of common themes, or can hear what each group has to say. So I think that we kind of hear that there are probably some logistics. I would imagine there would be a lot of interest from the homeowners in attending. We've heard a lot from one particular park tonight, but I'm sure there'll be similar interest from the other, from the other, you know, communities. So that might be one way of kind of consolidating feedback. I think we might have to be a little bit flexible on the fly, depending on how many people, you know, attend the meeting. If it's a small group, we could have a similar format. If we have, you know, a very large group, we may have to break into smaller groups, just to be efficient.
Right.
Well, that type of format I've seen be very effective in the past. But again, the key would be, you need to have a moderator, perhaps it's a Planning Commission member who's moderating or facilitating each group. And then if you have set number of questions or specific questions that everybody's going to be asked, you could always volunteer something else, but you have a common base that then gets reported out. That can be useful.
Yeah. I think another thing we could think about, for example, if each commissioner was heading up a group, if it was a significant number of attendees, then there could be a staff person, potentially, who could be taking notes at the same time as the discussion was going on with the pre-prepared questions.
Sound good? Commissioner Mulcair?
Just another idea on format. I don't know if any of you were involved with the Washington State Parks Organization when they were hosting very large public meetings around the St. Edward Seminary Development Proposal. They were able to include input from a lot of people by having four to six themes, similar to the questions that we've been discussing, and then inviting the participants to put their ideas on post-it notes or sticky notes, and putting them against the different theme boards, and even prioritize some ideas that way. It also gives us the advantage of preserving some of those thoughts beyond just the verbal dialogue.
That's how a lot of the open houses operate, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Anybody else? So I think that the key questions at the outset are, can we get a quorum for these meetings, the ones that are being proposed? It's a busier month than normal for us to take on three meetings. Somebody's got to help me there on that cell phone. And put it on mute or something. So do we have people who can, who can't make the meeting dates that were proposed by staff? Sounds like we can, right? And are, is anybody, is anybody objecting to the proposal to meet three times this month, for whatever other reason they may have? All right.
I'm unavailable on the 23rd, but I'm available on the 30th.
Okay. But everybody else is, sounds like. Looks like we're willing to do that, that schedule that you're proposing.
Right.
Okay. All right. So what's our next point of discussion?
All right. So the rest of the memo was really devoted to the two land use scenarios that you expressed the most interest in at your last meeting. The third scenario, which has to do with direct assistance, financial assistance, is something that, again, would be really fleshed out in front of the City Council. That would be under their purview. But I included that, some information about that in here. So I thought what we might do this evening is just refresh everyone on what the scenarios were. And then there were a series of policy questions. It's really an opportunity to just think through a few parameters of these two scenarios. I know the Planning Commission hasn't decided which scenario to choose, but for us to move forward in helping flesh out these ideas, it would help to have some preliminary indications from the commission on some of these policy questions. So if that works, we'll just jump right into scenario number one.
Okay. No objections? All right.
All right. So the first scenario that you discussed was to control redevelopment of the mobile home park properties and limit other land uses on those properties, but then, at the same time, to allow for a transfer of development rights to another, from a park property to another location. And that would be in exchange for preserving the existing park. The landowner would potentially sell the lost density to someone wanting to develop on another site. So we did some background research on TDRs, and I think we, Transfer of Development Rights, or TDRs. And I think we noted last time that most programs have been set up to preserve farmland or open space or that kind of thing. However, the Growth Management Act specifically calls out transfer of development rights as a good innovative land use management techniques. Technique, and the Puget Sound Regional Council also set it out as a housing innovation program tool. So there's policy support for using TDR. And in fact, in the last couple of sessions, there was specific discussion of mobile home communities as a TDR opportunity. So Seattle and Arlington, Virginia, were the two communities that we found that had used TDR for affordable housing. And I've included background information in, in the memo. I also talked with a planner in Louisville, Colorado, who had, they had been discussing using TDR for preserving existing mobile home communities. And in fact, the planner said, if you guys are headed in that direction, let me know. Maybe we can work together. I thought that was kind of funny. So we included a chart for your use that shows how big the properties are, what the current zoning is, and how many current units could be developed under the zoning, and the difference between the existing units and the possible units. You can see, for example, that the two parks on Northeast 175th Street, we've talked about this before, the difference between the current units and the possible units is, is small, between eight and 15 units, versus some of the other ones. The one on Northeast 182nd Street, for example, it's a difference between 63 and 158 units, so a significantly different situation. So the policy questions, and I can call up the memo here, and we can move to that part of the page. Uh-oh. There we go. Okay. So here were some of the policy questions that we had identified as we think about potentially fleshing out this scenario. And the first one is, where would the receiving sites be located? So as you recall, if you have a TDR program, the density moves from one property to another property. So the receiving property is getting a bonus, a density bonus, more than they could under current zoning. Now, I will say, I saw a really interesting approach in one TDR community, this is for open space, but one approach I saw said that certain parts of the city had a requirement that to get to a certain density, they had to purchase TDR units. I thought that was interesting. So that's a different kind of a strategy. So, in other words, where would the city accept density beyond the present limits?
Are you asking?
I'm asking.
Where do we know of in this city that would be suitable for increasing density as part of a TDR program?
Uh-huh.
Was hoping you would help us with that?
Well, I certainly can help you. I have some ideas, but I didn't want to.
Yeah, you don't want to preempt this.
Right, exactly.
Any ideas where in the city might be suitable for increasing density as part of a TDR program? I was thinking, you know, because our city is small physically, geographically, and we've already have sort of areas where we see growth and density increases, and we have our TOD overlay and other density incentives, that if we could encourage or be part of a regional TDR exchange program, that might be more efficient.
Yeah. I, I think that's certainly something to consider. I think the problem there is that the effort to set up a county-wide program is probably not on Kenmore's radar at this point. I, I just don't know how we would move ahead with that. And I think that we would be better served to start small in Kenmore, and then if that is not working, maybe begin conversations with the county about such a program.
Maybe Arlington, Virginia would be interested in a TDR change.
Swapping TDR credits?
You know, Lori, the recently defined neighborhood business zones come to mind, maybe because they're top of mind, but we could have some up, upper-end potential there in terms of density. I know we've left room within the definitions, but we didn't, we didn't max it out.
Anybody else? So Lori, we've got potentially the neighborhood business zones that we've just rezoned to increase density. I mean, we didn't max it out. I think we though, just had density incentives. Is that what you mean? We did, we did have a cap on the amount of units somebody could put in there.
Right.
If they set aside a certain number.
Mixed use.
Mixed use, right? So I wouldn't say that we haven't maxed it out. We've just set thresholds for getting up, getting more density.
Would that be double-dipping for the developer there on incentives?
Well, it would, it might over-populate those areas for, you know, for what was envisioned. Like, if you look at Simons and Juanita, you know, that's closer to downtown, it's potentially walking distance, we increase the density there. Do you want to keep going? You know, do you want to turn that into a more pure commercial district or more pure urban district? That's kind of what we're taking on, I think, if we keep going, right?
Mm-hmm.
So that's a little bit problematic. But I'd be interested, go ahead, Arthur.
I was just going to comment, I have occasionally had cities that have had different ways to get increased density on the same properties through different tools.
Okay.
And what they would often do is just set a cap, so that when you combine them together, you can't just keep adding that. You can add only to a certain point, and so there's still some overlay protection.
Yeah.
And then you have a choice as to how much of those incentives you use.
Alternative density incentives.
Right. And, and they usually are more than any of the individual, but there still is a cap that they put in place.
Okay.
So that's one way you could potentially look at that.
Right. Thank you. Lori, did you have other, or Commissioner Vanderland, did you have a suggestion?
Yeah. I don't want to have us walk away from the regional TDR too quickly.
Yeah.
You know, we're looking in the context of, we've always looked in the context of a 20-plus-year planning. I, I do accept that this would take a significant amount of effort in planning and talking with other regions, but it seems to me, 20 years down the line, this, we've got time to do something like that. And I really continue to be concerned about overextending our density within Kenmore. And I think we could probably get there and get to a place that we wouldn't like to have. Either you get to a place you didn't want to have, and you invite too much density, or you really set up some rules that really are not really going to happen. People aren't going to really build to that level. So, whereas I think there are outlying regions, particularly regions, particularly, I was thinking up in Sonomish County and whatnot, who have plenty of vacant space, who would, developers would like to have that opportunity. So I think we have a conversation that may not happen in the next 12 months, but something that could happen in the reasonably near future with some of the other regions.
You know, I tend to agree with that. I mean, we, we kind of got excited about the possibility of a regional TDR program, and we did ask you, hey, is it worth looking into?
Right.
And I think, I'm kind of wondering why you're discouraging that.
I'm discouraging it, I think, because a regional TDR program is very complicated.
Yeah.
And it would involve multiple jurisdictions over all of King County, presumably.
Yeah.
And I think that the timing of this particular issue is such that it's not something that we could wait, probably five, even five years, just because the property owner, if, if in fact, were really interested in the balance, we would need to come up with a more immediate solution. I would say that the area that came to mind was actually the TOD overlay, where we already have a significant amount of density. And if you look at the second policy question, should the density transfer also satisfy affordable housing requirements on the receiving site? I guess I, I was pondering whether you could use the TOD as a way to get your increased density sort of separate from the TOD requirements, and also to some degree satisfy your affordable housing requirements.
So are we talking about, you know, Arthur's talking about a cap with alternative density incentives. Are you talking about the same thing, or are you talking about increasing the density?
I'm not talking about increasing the density in the TOD any more than it is already increased.
Okay, so it would be that cap.
As you recall, it's 150 unit per acre cap. I was just suggesting that there might be a way to trade off rather, you know, you can only get to the 150 if you provide the different tiers of affordable housing, and is there some mechanism that you could increase the density and consider the mobile home park as your affordable housing contribution?
Right. Go ahead, Arthur.
Look at that as an alternative version for getting density, because you're preserving existing affordable rather than building new.
Right. But it's what you were talking about before, alternative density incentives.
Exactly.
Okay. And how many, how much, what's the size of the TOD areas that would be targets then for the transfers?
If I recall, the TOD area is about 19 acres altogether.
Yeah.
It's on the east side of 73rd and runs along SR 522. It includes the park and ride area. It was supposed to be an area that was close to transit.
So east side of 73rd, is it just, is it on the north side of 522?
North side of 522, correct.
Okay. And is there enough value in those, in that target area to absorb the lost development potential of the mobile home parks that we're trying to preserve?
I think, yeah, I think Arthur was saying we could, we could look at that. There are certainly large undeveloped areas in that TOD location.
Okay. Anybody else? Questions? So, uh, is there, let me ask the commission, are we comfortable with this proposal? Is it something we want to pursue and potentially recommend to the city council? Yes, Commissioner Van der Leyen?
Make sure I understand the proposal.
Yeah.
And we're talking about, in essence, are we talking about swapping a developer who wanted to develop at a certain density level within the TOD? That they would have the option of instead of providing affordable housing within the TOD, they could buy the development rights? And so essentially, we're, we're preserving existing rather than expanding new affordable housing.
Correct.
I would support that.
So the new, let's see, the TOD bought the, the developer of a TOD property would, would not have to set aside any units as affordable? They could build all market units up to that density maximum?
We need to figure it out.
That's the next question, is what you're getting at, but...
We would need to work on the math to sort of look at the value of what you're giving in each situation.
Right.
And there are some sites where there is some very large increases that could be allowed, so that, to your question earlier about, is there enough capacity? You might find there's too much capacity for, in some cases, where people need more than just what would, you know, depending on which park they were looking at or community they were looking at. So I think it's a trade-off thing we would like to do the math on so that, and you may, you know, and the question you might skew the math a little bit to be more favorable to preservation, if that's the really important policy, or try to get it as close as possible. I mean, that's where we try to give you information, so you could have, have an informed conversation on that front.
Okay.
I, I think the other thing I was going to mention is that the city, and I think you'll recall this from the neighborhood business work, but the city often has two levels of density. They have the base density, and then you recall there were, there's a density incentive chapter, and if you could accomplish that, you could go to a higher density. Maybe, I don't know that there's any need to restrict the receiving areas for additional density, if what you can say is, if you're preserving affordable housing, you get that same density incentive that we would have given you if you had built affordable housing. It, so it's sort of the same thing, only it's using the residential density incentive chapter. So if base density, for example, is 18 dwelling units per acre, but if you use residential density incentives, this is a chapter that's never actually been used in the zoning code, you can get to 30 dwelling units per acre. Well, now we say your base density is 18, but if you want to get to 30, well, you can buy some development rights off of these properties.
Right. So doesn't, how would this play out in practice? I'm wondering, does the developer look at TOD incentives and say, "Oh, maybe I can build, you know, I don't know what the units, number of units per acre we have as a target here." You're saying it's something like 100 in some places?
The minimum, I think, is 60.
60?
I think if you're going to do TOD, I think the minimum you can do is 60 dwelling units per acre.
Right.
Up to 150.
But there's no affordable housing set aside on that, it's just to encourage...
No, there definitely is.
Okay, that's it. I'm trying to figure out what, what the trade-off was.
Yeah, there definitely is.
All right. So they're saying, well, let's see, I could build 60 units per acre on this spot, I got to set aside, what's the percentage, 25?
It, it depends, there are different tiers of, of set aside, so that beyond, as you go further up...
Based on income?
Right, you have to provide lower, lower...
The lower income, the fewer units.
Right, correct.
So they could do that without any changes, you know, without having to dip into the TDR model, or they could, what, go to the city and say, you know, "I'd rather do TDR, a DDR program," and then somebody approaches the owner of the mobile home park?
Well, it, we haven't gotten there yet.
Yeah.
Some programs leave it exclusively, and again, mostly I'm looking at open space. Some programs leave it up to the property owners, they, to do the negotiation. In other cases, the city takes more of a role in matching folks who are interested and those who are selling.
So when the property owner thinks he may want to, here she may want to sell or redevelop their mobile home park, they come to the city?
Well, yeah, that's one strategy.
And say, "Look, here's what I want to do," and the city says, "No, we want to preserve this, but you can sell them under this scheme," and then they have to find a buyer?
Right.
Okay. All right, Vice Chair?
Yeah, I understand the, the challenge of putting together, I guess, a whole regional program for TDRs. Would it, is it feasible to even consider doing one with one or two neighboring cities on a smaller scale? As, as a possibility, as opposed to doing one that, you know, would include all of King or Sonomish County or...
Right.
However you wanted to find, is that, is that a possibility in a, in a, almost a pilot program approach?
Yeah, I don't know if you have any objection to that, Arthur?
Obviously, it could be broached a subject. I think that other cities I'm working with, when they have programs to increase density, they're trying to achieve some of their own objectives and needs, and so whether they would see preserving an adjacent community, I mean, you are part of a membership organization that sometimes cities do look at the world that way and say, "Hey, that's a good thing because we know how limited this housing opportunity is." I mean, eight or nine cities did help a group buy a property in one city, because they saw the value in that, of that need for housing. So would they do it through a land use tool? The other is, is that there is a lot of pressure on a regional open space system where they are trying to get multiple, you know, they're trying to create a regional open space TDR program, and so I've watched that, those conversations occur, and I've noticed how some cities are like, "Well, but we're doing our own TDR, open space, why would we do the regional?" So, but that, but that, that, that is underway, that there is a system for open space, so whether or not there might be a market there for that, at least there has been some conversation on a regional level for open space, but I generally see that cities are trying to create affordable housing through incentive programs already, and so they would, but we could broach the subject.
Well, yeah, and I think that it's something that could be done concurrently with whatever model we have for, within Kenmore, right?
Right. I mean, you, and I think that's maybe what Lori is saying, is make sure you have ace some places in, in the city, but given the scale and stuff, and you, you may only want to go so far, I think that's one reason for looking at the TDR area, and we need to do the math for, I mean, the TOD overlay.
Yeah.
That is an area where there's bigger numbers there that the city has put out there already. That could be a balancing act, but once you have something in place locally, could you branch out and see if there's some interest? I think, you know, I think that's an interesting idea to pursue.
Okay. So let me see if we get some agreement on this, whether we want the staff to do the math and to see if the TD, TOD areas are suitable for and can absorb the lost development potential in the mobile home parks. Any objections? Go ahead, Commissioner.
I'm in favor of it. Just ask a question, in part of the math work that you would do, I would assume we'd have to create some kind of a mobile home park equivalent to the affordable housing units in the TOD.
Right.
So you would do that, and then come back and explain to us how you, you arrived at that magic?
We, we'd at least try to explain where our logic came from and whether or not that sounds like sound logic would be your call, yes. And, and I would maybe put out there, I've heard three potential areas for us to at least think about. One is the neighborhood business overlay to see if there's anything there, at least to think about it. The second is the TOD overlay, and then the third is you have this residential incentive system out there that's sort of broader with smaller increases for more areas, and whether or not we should, those are three potential areas to look at from what I've heard tonight.
Yeah, I'm struggling with that third area. Do you guys remember that one?
You, you inherited, you inherited it as part of...
Yeah.
You will find almost identical language in about five cities, and guess what? You all incorporated about the same time.
Yeah.
And they were provisioned under the county code, and the main reason why it probably doesn't get used is the formula for the math bonus, you know, how much affordability per bonus unit is really low. I mean, you, you get hardly any bonus for every affordable unit, so the math looks very different because it's very old kind of thing, but you have that on the books when you, from when you incorporate it, so that's how old it is.
Have we, as a commission, looked at that?
No.
Program? Yeah, that explains why we don't know what the program is.
We did do some cleanup to it, but that was a number of years ago. We did some cleanup editing to that zoning section, but that was still over half a dozen years ago, I'm thinking. So there, it has been looked at by the city once since it incorporated.
Yeah. I think the reason that I was thinking of that is because I sense from the commission that there's a little bit of discomfort in greatly increasing densities in the community, and the, the residential density incentive chapter already includes in the zoning districts a base density and an upper end density. So it's already a density that is available through these residential density incentives, it's just that the tool is not very good or usable. So the TDR might be a tool that would make it possible.
Yeah. So this has been around since we've incorporated, and nobody's done it.
Right. Right.
And why do you think nobody's done it? I mean, I'm tempted to get a developer in here and go, why they...
It's the economics. I mean, I know when the, that the county made it that you get very little for what you have to give.
Right.
So why, do the amount of affordability you'd have to give for what you get in exchange would, would cost you. So, but the point is, you have, there's like three subsections within there. You could add a new subsection there that would be based on current math and current economics, and might actually be something people would look at.
Okay. Sounds like the whole program has to be reexamined, because it's not doing anything.
Well, and I think maybe you went with the TOD overlay, and that was another approach that, some similarities, so.
Okay. Well, I'm in favor of getting us up to speed on that and seeing if we can find a balance that invites investment into those areas. It would take pressure off the mobile home parks and would also potentially create more affordable housing, right? Pressure for redevelopment off if it's part of a...
We can part of the TDR.
TDR program that would invite investment. Okay. Any objections to that? Okay.
All right. So I don't know if you had any other questions that you wanted to discuss at this point, and again, I understand this is all very preliminary. You haven't had your opportunity to meet with the owners, you haven't had, heard from the homeowners. This is all just to help us start to flesh out some ideas, think about, you know, do the math, look at the regional TDR concept, et cetera, so, much more to come.
Maybe one consideration is, we're trying to put these questions together, and you wanted a little back and forth. If you have any thoughts right now for us in helping to draft the questions for you to look at from talking about this topic?
Oh, for the January 23rd and 30th meetings?
Yeah.
Commissioner Van der Leyen? You're the one who brought it up. I didn't know if anything was on your mind. You were the obvious one.
There are many things on my mind, some of them related to tonight's discussion.
Yeah, let's go with that.
I think the main question I would ask is, just, just to get it out on the table of the developers, is what is your five, 10, 15, 20-year vision for this property?
Are you talking about the owner?
The owner, yes.
Of the mobile home park?
Sorry, the owner, yes. That would be nice to hear.
Yeah.
I think that would help frame some of the other discussions we, we might have, and some of the zoning, and particularly if we were talking about some sort of transition plan, that would be something that would initiate that discussion. So I'd like to have, I'd like to hear that. And that really focuses on the question of redevelopment away from mobile home park, but I think there's also a follow-up question, particularly looking at the vacancy, the available development, the...
The underdevelopment?
Underdevelopment.
Yeah.
Do they have any plans, and what would be the restrictions or impediments to them expanding to their available capacity within their existing, within the property as it is, as a mobile home park? If we want to build affordable housing, maybe this is a place to do it, don't want to make that assumption, but if the owners themselves have no interest or there's huge impediments, then that's something we take off the table and start looking elsewhere.
Okay. Anybody else? I have one, and that is the ROC program by which the mobile home park homeowners buy the land from the current park owner, and there's that state agency that tries to finance or help with financing of a group of tenants so that they now control the property after they buy it. I'm looking for more details, and Ken, you know, I know that the, the mobile home park owners have been in here and said, "Well, that program requires a higher cap rate, and that means that the price has to be lower, that we would accept for selling the land, and that may not work for us economically." And my thought was, can we get the city to maybe bridge that gap so that they're not taking a hit by selling it to the tenants slash homeowners? And the tenants can still pull this off financially? And has it been done, and how effective has that been?
We've out in one situation where the buyer wasn't a homeowner, or the homeowner was a nonprofit group. All together financing to get through. They use a company.
Yeah.
Was there private financing in some ways?
Nonprofit group. Okay.
Like you could theoretically do a, a structure like that where owners are incorporated?
What can the city do to encourage that to happen? Yeah, but those are the questions, that's a question I'd like some more insight to, and I'd like the, the tenants to comment on that, and the park owners to comment on that to the extent they can. You know, are there lenders that, that should play a role in that discussion? The lenders, the people who would lend the money to the, the prop, the, you know, the word owner gets kicked around and get confused. owner gets kicked around and get confused between the park owner and the homeowner. And it's easier to say tenants because they're renting the land. In that sense, the big risk is those ground rents, ground rents go up every year.
My opinion is a question, it would be helpful to get perspectives.
Yeah, right. What are they looking for?
For the issues.
Yeah, so Commissioner Vanderline's, for example, said maybe the city could be a guarantor or provide other assurances to a lender to make them more willing to lend to a tenants' group to make that happen. Can we bring them into this discussion?
I bet you'll get some length, but because these drugs, they might interplay with your language tools.
Okay.
It is something.
Okay.
That side of the story.
Okay. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Extending on the idea of what else could the city do, particularly for those properties that we know that there's a underdevelopment, is there a way to subdivide that property in such a way that you would preserve the mobile, the existing mobile home component of that, but you would free up the undeveloped piece in a way that would create economic value for the property owners that could then be transferred in a way to preserve the existing, already developed mobile home section?
We see that they're building this layout that way. I'm not sure from, well, we drove around the other day and looked at all the parks that they, that they're using most of the lanes on that subdivision idea works.
Okay, so.
Or what in this case?
Well, that's something to understand then is when we see that they haven't developed to the, to the capacity, is that, I think we, you may have answered this question at an earlier meeting, Lori, does that mean that there is available space available to be developed or does it mean the current development at the, the way it's portioned out today in terms of the lot sizes has used up all the capacity? So there really isn't a subdivision option out there?
I think I agree with Arthur. We went out and looked at all of the parks and I, I can't think of one where there was a piece of property big enough to subdivide and do something else on. But we should ask that question.
Anybody else? Commissioner Vice Chair?
I think I have questions, maybe one for each group. For the, for the, oh.
Yeah, it's hard, yeah. Which group we talking about?
For the people who live in the parks, who own their homes, what is their thought about the possibility of purchasing the park if that opportunity arose? How they would, because I, again, that is, that has happened in other places. What's their thought about, I mean, not that they're necessarily going to have, you know, a plan together, but is that even a, you know, a viable option? And for the property owners of the parks, I noticed that three of the six have pretty serious, critical areas on their site, wetlands, flood plains, seismic hazards. Sort of piggybacking on what Commissioner Vanderline said, how does that affect their long-term thinking about their property, you know, five, 10, 20 years down the road? Is that, I mean, is that an impediment to redevelopment? And if so, to what, to what extent that might affect their future plans? So, so those are my two.
Thank you. I see on this list here, under scenario one, you've got three bullet points for quest, bullet points for questions, and they're up there. And the third one is should the preservation covenant require property maintenance and/or rehabilitation?
Right.
Can you elaborate on that?
Yeah. So I think it was the Seattle program and maybe the other one as well, because what is happening is that a covenant is placed over the park so that it cannot be redeveloped. If the, if the development rights are sold, in exchange, you take a covenant to say, okay, well, this is the way it is and it will not be redeveloped. These particular programs had a standard in them that said, okay, this has a covenant on it for 50 years, so whoever is owning the property has to make sure that it's not, you know, converting into an unsafe, unhealthy location. So that there's some reciprocal responsibility that you have to preserve the park for 50 years. You can't just take your development rights off of it and then not take care of it, is the idea.
So the burden is on the owner of the park?
Right, whoever that is.
And are these, these, what are we, maintenance?
Right.
And rehab.
They had to do with maintenance.
Does that go beyond the, the building code and the
I, I don't think in those
Other city ordinances?
In the, in the two that I looked at, I think basically it was sort of life, safety, health kinds of issues. That there was a commitment to addressing life, safety, health issues in the park, given that they had received money for selling their development rights. And they might not, might not even be the park owner anymore, but that now there's a 50-year, potentially 50-year covenant on this property. And so there needs to be some sense of obligation to maintain it.
Right. Well, what kind of surprises me is that implies there isn't that kind of obligation now is that there is no maintenance or rehab obligation for these parks?
Well, it's, I suppose there could be a code enforcement case. I think it's because the city would be taking or signing a covenant that, the person would be signing a covenant saying for 50 years, this is committed to affordable housing. So it's just formalizing that, sort of like a wetland maintenance requirement or, once you take a covenant, then you formalize the fact that the property has to be maintained in a safe condition.
Yeah. Well, I'm okay with that. I just, I wonder if it's already regulated, if we're, and specifically what we're adding, if there's already regulations to that.
Yeah, again, it was just, I, it was in the two TDR programs
Okay.
that I saw, a requirement that there be maintenance.
Yeah. In the Colorado City in Arlington, Virginia?
Uh, Seattle, I think, in Arlington.
Oh, okay. Any other, Commissioner Vanderline?
Yes, the question about options or the ability for the mobile homeowners to buy out the property interest of the property owners, that I think is, would be really interesting to probe the willingness or the acceptability of that idea, not a commitment, but the, the concept of both the owners, both sets of owners, and to see how they do it. I'm a little concerned about asking that question until we had some more information about just how, what would be the requirements? How would that, what were the technically, how would you do that? Who would fund it? So if staff or some help from our consultants could have that information available when we ask that question, so people really understood, I wouldn't want to set expectations that really couldn't be met in reality.
Yeah, I, I don't know how we would do that. I mean, the financing piece of it is a city council discussion. I think asking the question generally is appropriate, both to the owners and to the homeowners. But I don't think we could work through a scenario without ever having talked about it with the city council or nonprofit.
No, I'm not saying work through a scenario, and I understand, yes, the city council, this wouldn't involve a commitment.
Right.
This would be more like, here are some options. This is the way it's been done in other places. This is how it could be done. So it's, it's alternative options about how, so people get a sense of how realistic an option this really is for them personally or for them, their group as a whole. I just, again, I wouldn't want to set unrealistic expectations as part of that discussion. We end up going down, as I could see, a lot of excitement being generated over that proposal that would end up not being realistic and we'd have lost momentum on more realistic options.
So at this point, is the question more along what I think I was maybe hearing a little bit was, what, here is a tool that has been used at times, but this is ultimately, to some extent, a negotiation between two parties. Are these two parties interested in that kind of negotiation in this case? Is it something of general interest rather than, you know, the specific details to see if these are parties who would be interested in exploring it further in one shape or form or in, under what conditions they might be interested? Is that?
I think particularly that, under what conditions would be
Right.
Interesting information to collect.
Yeah, and I, I like what Commissioner Vanderline is saying here. If we could give them a sense of, here's how it's likely to work. If you were to have a chance to buy this mobile home park land, here's how other places have done it. Here's what the mortgage looks like. You know, instead of paying rent, you'd be paying a mortgage. Here's what the risks are. If there's a default on the mortgage, there has to be a group sort of overseeing this among the park homeowners. How would that, you know, the group, would they be elected officials? They'd be trustees, something like that. And they'd be responsible for making the deal happen and signing on behalf of the other residents. I, I like what Commissioner Vanderline is saying because in, in the abstract, it may sound very appealing, but in the details, it may be less appealing. And I'd like to get feedback from them on what's more or less appealing, what part they like, what part they don't. So the more we can make it concrete, I think the more efficient the process would be. So, I, I'm not going to take questions right now, but I invite you to either meet with us afterward or the next time we do meet too, because we, we do have to try and get through the agenda and it's already 8:40. And we usually wrap up by nine, so there's a fair amount here for us to take on. Is there any more questions about scenario one? I think is what Lori called it. Okay, so I think we should move on to scenario two, right?
Right.
Okay.
So scenario two was the other scenario that you expressed some interest in. It would rezone the properties for a greater density and then require new development to include affordable housing to replace the units lost in the existing mobile home park. And we note that all those approach preserves affordability generally. It would not save the existing unsubsidized affordable housing or the single-family housing type. So with that, Arthur had provided some information about how much additional density, what density limits would be required to make that a possibility in his chart. Do you want to talk about that? About how that's structured?
I would call this preliminary analysis to sort of give you ballpark concepts. And what we basically, what I heard is a direction from earlier meetings is if you were trying to replace all of those units with new affordable units.
Yep.
What would it take? And as we were talking about earlier, well, what's the affordability that you're looking for? And one level of affordability would require more than another level of affordability. So we just tried to do some quick math based on ratios that are currently in your code for pretty much the overlay, not exactly the same as your overlay, but pretty similar. And it's found, you know, so what you're seeing in this, in these columns for each one is how many bonus units you would probably need. So if you can put the chart up there, so column B is for moderate income, how many bonus units you might need. And then if you add that to the existing zoning already allowed, then the next column under there is showing you what the existing allowed zoning is plus the bonus you'd have to give to get the affordability. And then the number in parentheses right below each of those is what does that translate per acre as a rough estimate of the density per acre, just to give you a sense of what you would be looking at there. So we just took each of the properties and did the same, similar ratios, but just varied because of how many units are on the site currently and stuff. So that's, so it's a pretty straightforward chart. And I think it puts you in the right ballpark of what you would be looking at. We'd probably look at it harder if, depending on how far you want to go with it, but it's a starting point.
Questions?
So you have a question. So maybe to illustrate if we take the first one, and this is, would be the, first row is which property name? I can get, it's one of the two on the
Lakewood Villa.
Lakewood Villa.
Right, Lakewood Villa. So in that case, there's 57 existing homes, but the zoning allows 65. To try to get 57 units at moderate income, using about, I think it was a three to one ratio, we're saying that for every three bonus units, one would be affordable at moderate. So you would need 171 bonus units if they were all be at a moderate level. And so that means is the overall zoning capacity would need to become about 236 units for that property, which is about 44 units to the acre. And the 236 is just 65 plus the 171.
Or how does that compare to, for instance, the density in the TODs? How realistic is 44 or 65?
Well, your TOD provisions allow up to
150.
150 now.
This isn't
So, right. So basically, across the street, oh, that one is a pretty big parcel though.
Across the street works out.
Right. So that's about 80 units per acre. If you go, we're often seeing in our centers on the east side now that these four and five-story buildings are well in excess of 100 per acre. And so 80 is more like a four. You know, it depends on how you handle your parking and things like that, but.
So Arthur, you're saying that if, if in this first column, we, they, the city upzoned this property to allow for 44 units per acre and it would yield 236 total units, and that would be up to, what, 65 units? That would be moderate income?
57.
Affordable to people?
57.
57, okay. Affordable to people with moderate incomes and that's, what's that, 50 or 70 or 80%?
That's 80%, that's 70% for rental
Of King County median income.
Right, and 80% for owner. And then the low income is having the affordability at 50% of median for rent and 60% for ownership, I think.
How many stories would they, they have to go up, you think, to build that many units on that property?
That's where I'd want to work with some city permit staff a little more closely.
Right.
But that's where I was trying to give you examples to say, we have seen some three-story buildings that'll be 30 units to the acre. I, I don't know if I've seen three-story. You might be able to get to, you know, it depends on how, the size of the units. You might see some three-story, but you're more likely to see four-story and higher at the kind, and then structured parking and going into structured parking.
Okay. So I have a couple of comments on this one. First of all, the minutes from the last meeting describe this as the third scenario that we discussed.
Right.
And it, correct?
It could be. At the last meeting, we presented, I think it was five or six
Right.
different scenarios.
It was a third out of six.
And so you
Right.
kind of weeded out the two that you were most thinking about.
And in the minutes, it mentions that we discussed, and I brought up some things that you put my name on here, of ways that we might be able to do this kind of redevelopment in a way that reduces the transition burden on people who currently live there. And those were, well, offering the mobile home tenants a right of first opportunity to rent those new units. And that doesn't help with the transition, but it does give them an assurance that they've got a chance to continue living in this area
Right.
In a new unit.
Those appear in the, in the policy questions.
What's that?
Those appear in the policy questions. So under the chart, one of the questions is if it is legal to give a first right to rent
Right.
to displaced homeowners, should the city require it?
Well, one of my concerns is that the scenario that you described in our memo, scenario two, doesn't mention those things. And that was this, that was a description that you also gave the city council for their upcoming retreat of what we're doing with affordable housing, that it's almost verbatim. The scenario two in your memo here
Mm-hmm.
and the description to the city council of what we're working on and what the, and the ideas that we've come, come up with
Right.
at the December 5th meeting. But they don't mention the right of first opportunity and they don't mention a relocation assistance program option for people who don't want to wait around for the new units to be built.
I, I'm not sure where you're going with that. I mean, Debbie will be up there.
My concern is that we're saying, we're describing this program in one way in the minutes and a different way in your memo and then in the same different way
Well, we can certainly
to the city council. So they don't know some of the, the policy proposals that we're working on to try and reduce the, the problems that might come up with this kind of redevelopment.
Well, that's easily fixable.
Yeah.
And we can, I think Debbie's at the retreat tomorrow and she can clarify that.
Retreat starts tomorrow?
For Friday, right, sorry, Friday. So, and we can certainly revisit the description of the scenario and make it clear for the public when we're ready for this next set of meetings.
All right. So, so those, I do have that question about how, how high would we have to go to make that kind of a thing work? And I would also like to add that to the questions that Commissioner Vanderline brought up to the groups that we'll be meeting with on the 23rd and the 30th. You know, what is their reaction to this kind of proposal?
Right.
You know, we're saying there are a lot of competing interests with how we help affordable housing. There's the interest of the people who live there now. There's the interest of people who are shopping for housing and they can't find any that's in, you know, that's affordable to them. There's inducing investment in lower-income housing or any kind of housing in this area. You know, how can we get people to invest in more housing? Because that's the root of the problem. There's not enough. There's not enough housing. There's not enough housing, there's competition for the units that are out there, there's bidding wars that push the prices higher, and that's the, that's the scenario that plays out repeatedly throughout this region, and it's played out in other cities. We've seen this happen in San Francisco, we've seen it happen in Vancouver, B.C. So, they came up with a lot of great ideas that are going to help keep the housing affordable, and what they do is discourage new construction, and they discourage density, and they discourage investment in the new housing that's needed to satisfy the increased demand for housing. So, what happens? The rents go way up. They're way higher down there than they are in Seattle, even though they have this very active affordable housing program. It, it backfires. So, the things that we're talking about on this commission is how can we make affordable housing and still accommodate that economic pressure for lack of housing as it is now? And that's why we're coming up with an idea like this. It may be completely, I mean, Ish, Ish Bell was here a month ago, month and a half ago, and she dismissed this idea pretty quickly, because people would be giving up their mobile homes in exchange for a chance to live in an apartment, a new apartment, at a, at a, at a rent that's fixed at a percentage of King County income. That actually might work out well for them economically, but maybe it's just the notion of living in an apartment is so unappealing that it's not something they want to consider. So, that's a question I'd like to get feedback on from them, and is, and from the mobile home park owners as well.
I think that's a very good point, because the reason we're having these public meetings is to get the feedback of the current community. If we're trying to preserve affordability, then that needs to be taken into consideration. That's why all these people are here tonight. However, because of the economic pressures that we face as a city growing, and our relationship with King County, and with the other cities that we live around, it may mean that not all of our mobile home parks can be preserved in this manner. Love it if we could do that, but what if we can't? Then what are the alternative options? But the more input we can get, the more creative options we might be able to come up with. So, let's say one of the communities decides to buy their land from the owner. It's probably going to take a relationship between the owners and the tenants, if you think of it that way. But, you know, what if there's a vested interest with an outside group who wants to see the community, like a nonprofit group, maybe an interfaith group that would like to protect this kind of housing, preserve this kind of housing? That's the kind of discussion that we hope happens in the public meetings, that might spark some creativity that we don't currently have. We're talking policy questions, but sometimes creative solutions don't line up with policy ideas, but I think we need to explore that in the process. So, I'm glad you brought up the differences between what was in our meeting from the prior packet, what we currently are working on, and what is being floated to the, the city council. Those all need to be, have some continuity to them, so we don't have a, a discussion in one group that isn't really what's being talked about in the next group. So, just.
Thank you.
A recap.
Yeah. Any other comments? So, Lori, are you looking for us to address these five policy questions now, or is that something the staff will come back with more information about, and then we discuss it later?
Just as with the last set of policy questions, it was if you have reactions or responses at this point, it just helps us steer in a certain direction.
Well, one of these is a, is a, is a legal question. It's not a matter of policymaking. It's the third one, is it legal to give a first right to rent to displaced manufactured homeowners, and should the city require it? So, isn't that a question for the city attorney?
Right, it is. And so, if the commission as a whole is interested in having us pursue that.
Okay.
We will definitely do that.
Well, that would, that would be an essential underpinning to this whole program, so I, I don't think we can move forward without it. Anybody object to having the city attorney provide an answer to that?
Question. The first right to rent, but also the first right.
Good point.
I, I think that was.
Yeah. I mean, we can.
Okay.
It is a different question, I mean, it's a similar, but it is somewhat different. And we're actually working on something like that right now in Kirkland, where someone's buying some condos to rebuild a site, and some of the residents want to be able to buy the affordable units, and we're trying to get them lined up to be able to do so. So, we're actually looking at that right now, in an ownership situation.
No, and I want to, you know, we've got a, a good group here tonight, a large group, and I, I want to point out that, well, some people may look at this and go, no, there's no way I'm going to give up on my mobile home, I've made these improvements to it, which, by the way, doesn't mean you have to give that up. You could either sell it, or maybe there's another option for you to keep using that, that asset, but the, there are benefits to possibly redeveloping this and giving the current homeowners a right of first opportunity to rent these new units, new apartment units in a multifamily structure. Right now, you're paying rent on the ground that you're putting your home on. That rent can go up. It has gone up. There's no necessarily, there's no end in sight to that. So, that's a risk you're going to live with. With what we're proposing, or we're at least looking at here, your rent would be fixed in a brand-new unit, it might be much nicer than your current place, may not, might be, though, and it would be fixed at a percentage of King County median income, so that you wouldn't have that risk of it going up, holding, hanging over your heads indefinitely. So, it may be something that some people think, hey, maybe that's a better deal for me, or maybe that kind of a place might be a nice place to live, a brand-new apartment you know. I could tell you, if you build new apartments, like the ones that were just built across the street, there's a long line of people waiting to get in there at the subsidized or the, the below-market rent levels. I'm not saying, you know, make a decision now, or whatever, but maybe think about, there's pros and cons to that approach, and we'd like to hear what you think about both sides of that. Are there any other questions in relation to those that the staff has presented here?
On the policy question, just one of the, thought that came to my mind on the fourth bullet, in terms of requirements or the type of units to be provided, could we get some more discussion about what an equivalent unit would be like? So, we know what the mobile home units look like. Have people be willing, if that was the option, to move into a portable unit, what would that unit have to look like, and how does that impact all of our mathematical calculations about affordability, density, size, number of floors, all of that? Again, I don't want to set unrealistic expectations. Sure, there's some variation in between the mobile homes today, in terms of the first number of bedrooms, square footage, the amenities that are there. I'm assuming you'd want to have something comparable in the replacement of a portable apartment.
Anybody else? So, this last question, in addition to providing affordability, should relocation assistance be considered? I think that's, Lori, you're getting at what the two proposals we thought about to address the transition problem, right?
Right.
People would.
Yeah, I, I think Doug, that I misunderstood that the whole commission was interested in these two points.
Oh.
It seems clear that the whole commission is on board with that, and so, yes, we would consider relocation assistance as part of that scenario and add it in.
All right. Anything else on scenario two? All right. Is there anything else, Lori, on the agenda here?
Um, no, we, the rest of the memo just talks about the direct assistance scenario that the council would be discussing. You may have some thoughts about that. And then you had asked a few earlier questions, and we tried to respond to those questions. So, unless you have concerns, or you need more elaboration on those last three questions and responses?
I actually had a couple of questions on that, but it's getting kind of late. It's nine o'clock. I'm wondering if we should set that over for another time. Commissioner Vice Chair?
I, I just had one more that's not a policy question, it was more just a que, so there was reference made to a 12-month notice to homeowners when a park closes, is that correct? That's a state law?
Correct.
Okay, and that's a, a minimum notice?
Correct.
Okay. Is, is there any possibility, can Ken, could Kenmore set its own time limit on that? If, if it came to that, or is, is state law, I, I know it's a legal question, and not a policy question, but I'm just curious if that's, is that fixed in state law, and therefore that's, that's the law?
We, we'd have to double-check on that, and I'm sure there's people in this room who know, so in our follow-up homework, we'll try to get a more succinct answer to that question.
Yeah.
I don't want to say the wrong thing. I think I know the answer, but I'd rather double-check.
Okay, thank you. All right. So, I'm inclined to set over some of the questions we might have to the, for the, those that are referred to in the end of the memo for the next meeting, and see if you guys agree with that. Looks like we have agreement on setting that over. It's nine o'clock. We've all been here a long time. So, I think that's where we want to go with it, Lori.
That's fine.
All right.
And that, and that meeting is the 16th, in addition to the meetings of the 23rd and 30th?
No, I think.
16th we lost.
Right, correct. So, the next two meetings, again, the one on the 23rd would be with the park owners, and the one on the 30th would be with the homeowners in the parks. And we'll draft sets of questions and send those out. And it may be, depending on the timing, it may be that we need to send the invitations first, and then as a follow-on, send the questions. It'll just work out how quickly we can get some feedback on those.
Okay.
Because we want to notice, get people to notice as quickly as possible.
Right. Commissioner Baker?
So, the questions that, will those come to us, and we can add some, or suggest some? Or is this just a staff project, and we'll take the questions as they come?
I, well, I hope you'll give me some feedback, if you think something's.
You'll send it to us.
So, you'll send it to us, and then we can give you some feedback?
Right, but it has to be an interaction between each commissioner and.
Just, just one-on-one.
Correct.
So, don't share it, right?
Yeah, right. We can't comment, comment on each other's questions.
So, we're just basically going to respond just to you.
Right.
And maybe, could we add, or can we consider, or things like that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Anybody else? Lori, does that satisfy what we need to, for the, what we've agreed to take on tonight? Is there anything else you guys need to present? Are there any items of new business or announcements among the commissioners? All right, there being none, I hereby adjourn this meeting. Thank you.